Okay, so it is 6:30 on Thursday, April 23rd, and we are starting our remote school committee meeting. We're gonna skip the first.
Now, we're gonna go right to it. If you look on the screen, he just joined us. Senator, welcome.
He's muted.
He's muted. Senator, can you hear us? There you are.
I got you. How are you?
Good, good. All on board is our team here, number of administrators and the five members of the school committee. And we thank you, and we're not gonna take up too much of your time. Our agenda has a general kind of update relative to COVID. So we were wondering if you have any updates you'd be willing to share with us that doesn't violate anything. And then I think the board has some questions they might wanna get to.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to come on and just kinda, you know, first off, say thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing. I know you and your team and the administrators and educators at MPS have been through quite a trying time along with the parents and the students. And I don't just say this because I'm on this call. But I think you're, you know, the town of Norton and the public schools are fighting to take them across the Commonwealth. It was no playbook for this, as we know. There was not a long ramp up time. Folks couldn't put together the, you know, a plan on how to handle this. It was something that and we went from the span of just a few days back in March, we were talking about, you know, how do we abide by social distancing and maybe cut down on, on the sizes of cafeterias and lunches? And then all of a sudden, a couple of days later, we were talking about how do we engage in, you know, remote learning with the schools being shut down? So I just wanted to take just a couple minutes and just give a real brief update on where we are, kind of the 3,000-foot view. We are in the midst of a much-publicized surge with this pandemic. There is no doubt about it that the modeling and projections that we were looking at have been largely accurate these last probably 10 days is where we've seen the most activity in our, in our, in our health centers with healthcare providers, in hospitals and in other places, aggregate care facilities across the Commonwealth. There was some good news. For a few days, we started to see a little bit of a decline in the infection rate and really in the acuity of the infections. So less folks were hospitalized and even less were actually moving to ICU units. So we showed some good progress. And then, of course, in the last couple of days, we've seen another spike. I would just say, look at those numbers with a little bit of caution. We are doing a lot more testing now, which is good. Yesterday was our highest rate of testing across the state. That's gonna be necessary as we try and come back online at some point to have robust testing across the state. And we're starting to see that. But that just means that we're showing more and more people with positive cases. What we're looking at specifically is the infection rate as it relates to testing. And that's been hovering right around kind of low 20s. We've had a couple outlier days where it's been up in, you know, in the high 20s, 26%, 28%. But right now, we're just kinda hovering around 21%, 22%. So that infection rate is important with the public health experts when they make these decisions going forward. But we were in the surge. The good news is that our hospitals have been well-prepared for it because of two things. Number one, all of us, all of you, have done the right thing and people have stayed home and have been able to slow this enough that there wasn't so much of a demand that we were actually eating up the resources that our hospitals require to handle something so, so severe as this infection. So that, that, that worked. That helped. And then, number two, the things we put in place for the last month, I think Governor Baker and the administration have done a great job in really focusing on the public health aspect of this and making sure that we understood not only on a statewide level and a regional level, but really drilled down to the local municipalities on, you know, how many beds were available, how many ICU units, beds were available, how many ventilator units were available. So we've gotten to a point where the surge is here and the hospitals are not being overwhelmed. So little bit of positive news in some really difficult times, I know. On the school side, I would just say, you know, like I started with, there was no plan. A school committee set to come together with superintendents and administrators and educators and parents and community members and figure out, how do we keep students engaged at a time like this? And, you know, it's unprecedented, and I think certain towns have done it right. I know Norton, you have been dealing with a ton of challenges, but you have risen to that occasion. If you think about this in phases, number one being, you know, kind of triaging those immediate needs once we close the schools down. How do you take care of meals? How do we make sure that some of the food insecure families have what they need? You know, making sure that, that people are safe, that students and families were safe. How do you deal with, with some of those other issues that aren't necessarily core curriculum issues, but that we know and you know more than anybody are important to families and, and a public school system? So that was step one. Step two, you know, phase two, we got into the initial engagement on remote learning. And I think that's where, you know, that, that's where a lot of creativity came, came into play. That's where good management came into play and certainly the expertise of our educators to have this remote learning system so that, you know, we were still engaging students in the curriculum that, that they deserve to, to have. So that was kind of phase two, figuring that out when we didn't know when schools were gonna open. Now we're in that third phase, so kind of in the third quarter of this, which is, you know, dealing with some updated guidance on remote learning. We know that the schools are not gonna open for the remainder of the school year. So, you know, dealing with, really kind of taking it to the next level on remote learning going forward for the rest of the year. And then finally getting to that point where there's a clear set of guidance and an understanding on what it's gonna look like when we eventually reopen. You know, this has been a trying time for a lot of people. I don't want anybody to think that, you know, the state is just gonna leave folks to their own devices. There will be guidance on that. The CDC right now is, is certainly starting to put together a plan. Governor Baker and the administration have a task force that's gonna be, you know, working exclusively on this. And certainly in the legislature, we have our relevant committee chairs and we meet on this on a daily basis. So, so that'll happen. We'll get there. And I just wanna add one kind of final piece to that is something that I know you all are thinking about constantly and certainly the parents and the families in Norton, that extra piece that's not core curriculum, but the seniors and others that are losing out on an incredible time in their lives. And certainly all of us have been through it with proms and graduation and all that. And I know that the town of Norton is coming together, like many towns throughout, throughout the personal Norfolk Senate District and across the state, to make sure that, that, that those seniors and folks that are moving on from, from their school career understand, you know, that there are people in the community that are pulling for them. And I don't say that lightly because that's, that really is a big piece and that's a huge part of, of a Norton, you know, Norton Lancers' experience in life, right? So whatever I can do to that and to help with that, you know, to make sure that however creative we have to be, you know, that the students know that people are out there thinking about them and that they're not forgotten. And then finally, Joe, and to the, to the school committee, I would just say, as we work through, you know, kind of these next details, I'm available 24/7. Most of the legislation that we've been, we've been talking about recently is kind of fall, you know, fallen by the wayside and it's all COVID-19. We are working exclusively on both the, you know, the public health aspect and the mitigation to the COVID-19 virus. So please reach out. There is a lot of pain out there economically. I will tell you that 80 to 90% of the phone calls that I've been getting in the last two weeks are from families, many of them in Norton, dealing with unemployment issues. You know, simply one paycheck away from poverty, one pink slip away from poverty, and unfortunately, it came. So we're trying to, trying to manage that and make sure that people are getting the benefits that they need. So if there's anybody within, you know, within the community that needs that help, please reach out to us. We don't have an answer yet on what the budget's gonna look like. I will tell you just, you know, kind of back of the napkin draft on, on what the budget writers are starting to see is that this consensus building that the Commonwealth will be between $4.7 and $6 billion short for next fiscal year, FY21. There was a hearing, I think it was two weeks ago now, there was kind of a redo on the consensus revenue hearing and, you know, everybody that we heard from was projecting roughly, we'll call it $5 billion short. So normally, we would be in a position right now where last week, the House would have released their budget. They would be debating it next week, and then the Senate would take it up in May. That obviously has been pushed back. We still don't have a concrete plan yet on how we're actually gonna come together and vote. There are some constitutional issues we gotta work out and, of course, some logistics issues about how we're gonna actually physically get together and debate and vote on a budget. I know that that makes your job very, very difficult. I know it's tough because you're now starting to budget or you're well on the way to budgeting for FY21 makes your job impossible. Part of the discussions that would have been happening is can we offer some guidance to cities and towns and to school committees on what we think a cherishing number would look like, on what we think a Chapter 70 number would look like? And we're just not there yet. I've, you know, had conversations with the Senate Chairways Means, and one of the kind of guiding principles, I guess, that we're starting to come around towards on this budget is that most line items will probably see around a 10% reduction, keeping in mind a couple of different variables. Number one, the state stabilization fund, or otherwise known as the rainy day fund, is actually in a pretty good position. It's a little bit over $3.5 billion, I believe, at this point. That can shoulder some of the burden to, to a shortfall, but not all of it. And really, what we're gonna be looking for is for the federal government to offer direct aid to the states and municipalities. There was a bill that was debated today in Congress that's kind of the next phase of a, you know, I don't wanna say a stimulus bill, but kind of an economic recovery bill. That did not include aid to the states, which is concerning. But I do know that those discussions are ongoing. We were on a call just the other day with Senators Warren and Markey, and they were advocating for that on behalf of the state as well. So a lot of it is gonna depend on what we see from the federal government. But until we get to that point, I'm very cognizant that I know you have a job to do, and we're gonna try and get numbers to you as soon as we can. But, you know, again, we're just not there yet. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea on that. So again, I appreciate the opportunity. I can take it now, I can stick around, or you can certainly contact me on my cell phone or however you wanna get in touch with me afterwards.
Senator, thanks so much. I'll turn it over to Kathleen Stern as chair for questions from, from the committee if there are any, and then I'll, I'll finish up on my side.
Right, I thi- I think I just have two, well, one question and one update. The question is, do you think the uptick was because of the extra testing? I mean, that seems to make sense that if you test more people, you're gonna have more positive reactions. Secondly, I was on the Massachusetts School Committee meeting last night, and just to give you a heads up, these were some of the concerns that they're really looking at. And I'll only give you the ones that kind of pertain to state level as opposed to town level. One of them is the Chapter 46, no, Chapter 46, something 43 was about busing. A lot of places are paying different bus fees, and I think that what we really need is something from the state that tells us. I mean, if there's a general law about it, then that's what everybody should be paying. And it was across the board last night. So a lot of people felt like maybe they weren't getting a fair deal, which I understand. The other thing was tech hotspots. I know that our town has worked on it, but a lot of towns are having trouble with the equity issue of students not being able to get online because of internet and Wi-Fi issues. Graduations is always a big, a big one, which obviously we have to do town by town, but maybe something could be said about that. And the last thing is September, there are some questions about if we even go, will we need masks? Will there be enough wipes? Obviously, that's far in the future, but is that something the state is willing to help us out with? Because I don't think each town itself would be able to come up with all of that on our own.
Right. Thank you. Great questions, Brian. Yeah, I would say that, that on the uptick, yes, it looks like it correlates directly to the testing increase. I think the testing for the last 24 hours, so the reporting period that was reported this afternoon, it was almost all the amount of the highest testing day that we've seen since we started this. And, and the numbers correlate as far as the amount of positive cases. So it does seem that's, that's the case. That's why I think it's important to look at the infection, or the that positive rate was stayed around the same. So I think that's the answer on that. On the buses and other vendors and other things, message received loud and clear, we have been talking about this for a while now because different school districts have been handling it a different way based on their contracts that they have with all sorts of, you know, vendors and, and, you know, direct employees versus contractors and everything else. So we've been in contact with the chairs of the relevant committees in the legislature. They are working these issues with the administration. You know, hopefully, there'll be some general guidance for everybody to, you know, to take going forward. On the tech hotspots, something I've been working on personally because it's, it's a big issue. You know, there, there are many folks that are doing great with the remote learning, and there are others that literally can't because they don't have access to high-speed broadband to allow them to do that or any, any internet connection at all. There's a program right now that's literally just come online in the last 48 hours to try and fix this problem in many low-income communities. But what I've been advocating for is to understand that we have folks that are in communities that may not be necessarily deemed low-income, but that still have these same challenges and are still facing these issues. So hopefully, you know, sometime we have some, we have some measurable, you know, progress on that. This is, you know, we can work together to kind of make that happen in Norton and in the, in the region. I will say that I've heard from some of the carriers, I've heard from Verizon and others that are, you know, trying to work it out and make sure that where we don't have, you know, the ability for some students to directly get on high-speed connections at their home, that we have some sort of, you know, neighborhood hotspot or a mobile hotspot that we bring in and then right down to the level that if we can't provide that, making sure that we just, in the home, just having the little MiFi's, you know, personal MiFi units and then we can figure out a way to load those up with data. So that is happening. I, I appreciate you bringing it up. And then the final part on reopening, look, this has been a problem since, since day one, where once we realized the amount of PP that was gonna be needed in a whole, mostly different areas. So obviously, the, the first priority would make sure that nurses, doctors, healthcare providers, hospitals had what they needed, you know, certified N95 masks, gowns, face shields and all that. Then we started to look outside of that kind of circle and saying, okay, well, these other places that are old, people are congregating facilities, you know, they need, they need this PP as well and clean supplies. Public buildings, fire stations, police stations, they're working. And it became the system of like, add-on. You know, I was, I was joking with somebody around, like, it's like Lord of the Flies. It's everybody for themselves. Everybody's running out and trying to get their own PP and, and you should, and you should be doing that. But that's not the way the system should work. It should really be, you know, centralized hierarchical structure where we know exactly what the inventory is that we have on hand and also manage the dispersment to places. That's gonna have to, that has to happen for schools because if we get into a situation where every school is fighting for their own PP and cleaning supplies and bidding against a neighboring town or another, it's just not gonna work. So part of what the task force is, is charged with doing is we reopen, really working with stakeholders to figure out what is the available inventory and what do you need so that we don't have some, some places or some schools or some school districts hoarding supplies because they're afraid we're gonna get to a place where we don't have them? And then other places that are really in urgent need that can't find them. So that's all part of the discussions. It's something that I've been advocating for, for a while, is to make sure that we have an actual understanding of what the inventory is and what is needed. But I think that'll come, you know, that'll come in the coming months where this task force really puts together a plan for reopening.
Great. Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any questions?
If members don't, then I, I just wanted to follow up with a couple of, if I can, Kathleen. So Senator, first of all, thank you for joining us tonight. But I, I, you know, some folks know this, some don't. I know that I communicated with you about our food services personnel being recognized as first responders because they're putting themselves out there. So I appreciate you continuing to beat that drum on behalf of my five employees that are, you know, they work for Chartwells because it's a private company, but they're my responsibility as well and, and they're great people. Today, we fed 455 meals in Norton, including 200 seniors and adults. If that doesn't speak to the need of the community, it's incredible. But it's also awesome for us to be at the forefront of that in Norton for our, for our community members. So keep beating that drum for us with those people because I think they need to be recognized. They're not, they're, you know, they're not making extra money. You know, they're working. And so thank you for that. The other one is Desi has requested, I'm the elementary second education, has, has sent out a survey and the commissioners asked us to respond to that survey about tech needs. It'd be great if we could have someone follow up with the commissioner's office about what did that survey say? What are the priorities of that survey? And then what does that mean? In Norton, I basically said that in kindergarten to second grade, I don't have one-to-one. So that's my biggest need is those 500 students. If it wasn't for school choice, my students in grades three to 12 would not have to one right now because we, our budgets just haven't been able to sustain it. And then probably the one, since I have Vinnie Cersei, our Director of Guidance and Social Emotional Learning for the district, on with us, is a continuing concern that we have about any student in the senior class that has yet to pass their MCAS. And this idea that kids are gonna come back in July and August to take their MCAS, it's a very low percentage rate that already does that. After having multiple opportunities, they just don't, they don't come back. Goes back to my time as a high school principal. They just don't. And that may be, that's the only requirement they have, is an English test or a math or a science test, that one test. They've passed everything else at the local level. Right now, the commissioner is suggesting that he's waiting for the most recent test results. I, I can understand him waiting and then hoping that the Board of Ed gives him some authority to say, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna mulligan this as well. It's not a lot of students in Norton or in some cities, it's larger. But in many cases, there are students who have had struggles beyond ABCs and 123s in school. And I think those kids should be able to continue their education and/or enter the workforce with a high school diploma because this is a very rare situation that we're going. So, and I know that you, you, you had your hands on changing some of that legislation in the past.
Yeah, we're, and you're right to, you're right to raise it. It is a small group of students that we gotta count on it. Last week, we had a briefing on this, and it's a small group of students across the Commonwealth. But you're right. I mean, those are students that we can't just leave by the wayside. So we're aware of it. We've been dealing, you know, having active conversations on, on what that's gonna look like, whether there's a, you know, some regulatory relief on that or if we should do something through the legislature. So discussions are happening and you're right to, to raise it. And I appreciate what you, what you were advocating for as well with your, your food service workers, Chartwells. I mean, we, you know, there are, there are some people that, you know, can't stay home and, and, and work by Zoom, right? And we're putting them, putting them in a, in a position that's difficult for them where they do, you know, really, they really are essential to our community. And, you know, that group of workers that you've had, I mean, I'm, I'm blown away with, you know, the response in, in Norton on many, many levels. I was talking to Leah over at the library today, and she was talking about how, you know, exactly what you and I were talking about with the seniors being fed in addition to students. And, you know, there are many communities that are able to step up and do that. So the people that are doing that work, we wanna make sure that we're taken care of. And I'll continue to advocate. I've spoken with the Command Center a couple of times on, you know, seeing if we can include them in the priority testing and making sure that any sort of, you know, any sort of legislation that's passed, we're, we're thinking about them as well.
Yeah, my biggest concern is if that one of them goes down, all five of them have to go home for 14 days. And then my food services comes to a potential standstill. So 450 meals are no longer being picked up on a daily basis. And we're now a, a Monday through Friday with a pickup on Friday for the weekend. So tomorrow's about to be a huge pickup of food because everybody's picking up three days' worth of food. And lastly, for you and, and the committee, you know, as we look at this, then this is a tough one to bring up, but I think it's important. Public employees have to be notified either by contract or by state law on the June 15th notification of being laid off. That state statute of June 15th, some local contracts, teachers contracts, par contracts, even administrative contracts, custodial contracts, anybody who works in, in our sector have other dates. But in Norton, we have one contract that's June 1st. It's our par professionals. And then everyone else is June 15th, including employees, including myself, for example. I'm wondering if there's a potential to, to look at moving that to June 30th, only because that two-week window for, it could be that some towns have town meetings. This, this is more aligned to the town meeting form of government because you have to have the town meeting. If it's representative, you could probably find a place to do it where they're six feet apart and all that. But when you're open town meeting, that is a huge undertaking. So what that means is our last day of school happens to be June 15th. So without knowing what my budget is, I'm gonna be sending out extra pink slips just because I have to protect the community and the district from, you know, not having the mon, the funds later. That said, on June 16th, all of those employees begin to collect unemployment. That's a fiscal '20 problem of where towns don't have the money and also a fiscal '21 problem because on July 1st. But those last two weeks of June, those folks are all able to collect unemployment, even though, quote, they're being paid out through the end of the year, they have that right to go there. So I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe you could have those above me that are smarter than I am consider that there's a significant, there's a potential for a significant financial impact within the FY '20 year that I don't think any of us as community folks need to have added onto the plate of financial woes.
Yeah, understood. There is, well, there has been a couple of municipal bills that we've already passed through the House and the Senate that deal with, you know, kind of the basic block and tackling of municipal government, right? How do you handle a town meeting? Yeah, how do you deal with spring elections that are coming up? You know, how do you do budgeting, allow 112 budgeting while we're going through this? I, I was told just a couple of days ago that there is the, kind of the next iteration of a municipal bill that's being drafted right now. Matter of fact, I brought up a Norton-specific issue about the Charter Commission. That's, you know, a story for another day. But still, there is another municipal bill that's coming out that's going to consider all these things. I know that's, that's part of it. So I will, I'll make sure I bring that up with, with the chairwoman who's drafting that bill and see if there's some, something that we can do on that because it makes, makes perfect sense. I mean, especially where these budget decisions aren't gonna be made until, you know, pretty close to that date.
Right.
If not past that date. So, um, message received and I'll, I'll elevate that to the chair of the committee and see if we can get it in the next municipal bill.
Appreciate that, thank you. As always, for your support and taking the time tonight to be with us, so.
Thank you. I, I know you get a lot of business to conduct, so I won't take any more of the time. I just want to say thanks again. I, I, this has been, um, incredible couple of months for so many people. And I just, my heart is with, with all you and, and, and the families in Norton and your students. And, um, I, you know, like I said, there's a, a lot of trepidation and pain out there. And, um, you know, you folks as leaders in the community are really putting people at ease when you give out communication and, and you, you know, you, you're staying on top of things. So continue to do that and use me as a resource. Like I said, I'm available 24/7. So whatever I can do, please, please, please let me know.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you from us, our, our school committee for taking the time out to meet with us. I'm sure you have a lot on your plate right now.
I'm on a Zoom call right now, so I have just a minute left. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we can stay on that if you want, Kathleen, uh, just for a lo, a more local update. Um, uh, you heard the numbers earlier from today. So every single day, um, we've reached the 400 and then since then it's been a climb every single day. And tomorrow will be triple the number just because it, it, we're feeding Saturday and Sunday. Um, and we, uh, we, we do have, uh, food being delivered through emergency management. Um, and emergency management is, uh, receiving, um, um, if you will, through Chief Simmons, um, emails for anyone who wants to volunteer to participate in delivery. Um, Chief Simmons and the Ems and emergency manager are taking care of coming, starting next week, three days a week. Um, picking up food and taking it directly to, to, to those, uh, that are homebound or can't get out of the house in any way, shape or form, et cetera. So that's, that's a good thing if people, um, want to get out there. Um, we have 71, um, confirmed, uh, C-19 cases in Norton.
Believe it, it's 79 now.
Okay, so that was 71 at 10:30 this morning. So eight more, uh, today. And, uh, the board of health agent, um, uh, clearly articulated that there's been a spike over the last 48 hours. Um, there was seven yesterday, now it's eight today. So you're, you're seeing it. And unfortunately also two direct deaths related to C-19, uh, in the town of Norton. Um, so that's, that's unfortunate and, and we, we send our best to those families. Um, so, uh, a lot of discussion about, uh, being at that curve, if you will, and just that plateau. And just, you know, as we all know, it's gonna take a little longer than I, than maybe, uh, it was stopped. But we also reached it, uh, maybe a little, a few days earlier. If you remember the original, I had it around the 27th. Uh, here we are on the 23rd. So this week has really been the, um, the uptick. Um, besides that, I don't know if any members of my team have any, any updates that they think is really important for the public and the school committee, uh, to know on, on the, uh, um, C-19. Uh, the only other things that I have for you is in the very near future, we're going to have some calendar of events about opening up the school for our staff to get extra materials that they're going to need for teaching and learning for the rest of the year. Um, then we'll do something with our students with lockers and all of that and personal materials that they have. Um, but we're gonna have, we're gonna really take this slow and, um, have everybody be flexible. Because we're also trying to maintain all of the social distancing, making sure we're cleaning places once people are there, um, and all of that. Anyone else? All righty. That's it, Madam Chair.
All right, well, I'll just add a couple of the things, um, from last night's meeting. So, um, as far as busing, I think we're doing pretty well. If I, if I understood you correctly, Dr. Byetta, we're paying 30% right now?
We're currently not paying anything. Um, the discussion that's out there has been around 30%. Um, we are working with, uh, Bloom and Taunton Public Schools, Berkeley Public Schools, Dyson Rahoboth, Taunton Public Schools, Attleboro, and us because we're all part of that process. The catch here is all about two parts. A, the state law is very clear that you pay for services that are provided. Currently, those services are not being provided. There are local communities in our area that have articulated that they will not pay that, uh, at all, period. Um, I've decided to take the approach, uh, the commissioner of education has clearly articulated that he's very concerned. And we should be paying something within that contract because what happens when school starts up and you don't have bus drivers? Uh, then you have an added cost, uh, of reimbursing parents, having to go off of taxis, you know, anything that could actually become more of a burden. Um, the concern is also, um, from my view, and I'll speak for Norton in terms of, uh, the administration, uh, in my view. The concern is also that, you know, um, we've, we've been under the guides for a long time of, uh, at least 20 years in my record keeping, going back in the last seven years in Norton of one bid every three years. Um, and there are outs for these companies, uh, that have less than 500 employees under the federal, um, small business loans that are out there. Um, and, um, the, the people that I'm currently paying, um, I am paying for a different job, i.e. under remote learning, but they're being paid for a responsibility every day. Um, so, um, my concern is, uh, it's also a third party. It's not a direct employee of the district. Um, food services is providing a service and there's a charge coming in and a potential payment on the other side. Um, so right now, that's where we're at. I think the, the, the biggest thing that we have to learn from this entire COVID-19 situation is that, uh, our 350 towns and communities are so independent of each other and how we do things. Versus, for example, certain states where these issues have been decided and they're done and they've moved on. Um, and right now, um, like I said, we have town accountants that are saying, not from ours, uh, nope, not paying it. Um, no matter what, uh, we're not paying it. Uh, we don't have to pay it because there's not service being provided. Um, those people have been unemployed and they're paying, and they're getting paid through unemployment from, um, the bus company, which is, you know, at the cost of the bus company right now.
Apparently, from what I heard last night, there's also some kind of, um, I don't know if it's a loan or a, a, a help, um, where the bus companies are being paid to pay their people, even though the schools themselves. And so one of the big discussions last night was about double dipping. Some of the, um, areas are paying 70%.
Yeah, Matt and I have had that discussion very clearly and another local superintendent and I have had very clearly that any agreement that we make on behalf of Norton Public Schools will clearly articulate, um, that if there's other payments in any way coming in, that those are not, those payments then are due back to us. Um, you know, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't in this situation. I hate to say it that way, but it is what it is.
Hey, Joe, I don't, um, the, the program that Kathleen's referring to, if it's that PPT program, I thi- I think they have to actually pay that back. So it's, I think it's difficult to say that we want anything that you're getting from the government to come to us. Because it's potentially something they're gonna have to pay back at some point. Um, so this is something to think about. Um, and, and beyond that, while we're talking about busing, um, just something to start thinking about for you and maybe for Matt particularly. I think last year we, we sent out our, um, our info on the following years busing pretty early in the summer, if memory serves me. Um, it's entirely possible that we're not in a position to do that this year. So I'm not sure what next year's buses look like right now, to be honest with you. Um, it's also very possible that there's going to be a lot of parents who are simply not going to send their kids on the bus. So not, not a, uh, not a comic per se, but more something just kind of, we need to start thinking about stuff like that.
Yeah, and, uh, Dinesh, to, to your comment, thank you for that. Uh, the fact is, we, we've had some internal discussions already about what will we see with the busing? So the general sense has always been that if the, depending on what the establishment becomes or what is established from the Commonwealth's leadership in terms of a return. If this return is not just a simple return, you know, we open up the doors and we come back to school like it was September of 2019. Um, whatever we do is going to have a cost, huge cost issue to it. Um, for example, the, talking about the PPEs with the Senator and where, how does that come from? We can't even get them right now if we wanted to, never mind, except for maybe asking Terry to continue to make her, uh, uh, mouthguards. Um, just got hundreds of them, maybe we could get 2,500 by the time we come back. Um, but, um, but the other part of it is, um, maybe we won't need as many buses because of what you just said, right? And so our contract has those, those types of outs for us. Um, you know, the, the most important thing is going to be is if you're looking at slashing, uh, you know, things across the board by 10%, then everything to do with transportation between grade seven and 12 for next year is going to be on the table. Uh, because you're, you're gonna have to try to keep people in order to, to, um, teach and learn, uh, for teaching and learning. And, and I don't know what's gonna come from so. And, and there are, there are loans of, some grants available for small businesses already. And there are loans that have to be repaid. And there's this movement to have loans that basically don't have to be repaid. Um, it saves municipalities' monies basically at the end of the year.
Right, uh, there was a talk, I remember originally about particularly the ones that were going towards salaries. Um, there were going to be loans originally and then a few days ago, the government was just gonna say, Matt, don't worry about it, we're good. So it's possible, but it's just something to think about when we're asking about returns from anything.
Right, and well, the, the issue for us has always been like, if you have 50 employees who work for the town of, who work for us or indirectly for us through X transportation company, in this case Bloom, what is their hourly rate? How many hours do they actually work? And this is what they get paid. All of this other stuff that goes into play, i.e. gas, usage of all, all the, if you will, uh, uh, market areas where they're profiting, I shouldn't be paying a penny of that, not at this point. Um, and so that's, that's not necessarily been the easiest thing to get from transportation companies throughout the Commonwealth, which I do find to be very interesting.
It's def, it's definitely not equal. I mean, I was on with, I think, 72 people last night and hardly anybody was paying, no, nobody said they were paying 30%. So I guess we're good with that.
Right, we just haven't made a decision. And that decision, by the way, belongs to the school committee. It doesn't belong to me because it changes, uh, it's a, it's just like when you voted to pay employees, it, it just comes back to you. Based upon it being legal under chapter blah, blah, blah on the town side. And that's the problem is we have some towns looking the other way and some towns playing hardball with making that payment. And so that's the reason why you've got these situations. And don't forget, uh, people who have their own transportation.
Uh, one of the other things they talked about last night was, um, having town meetings outside. One of the towns was small enough to be able to do that. Um, considering how many people we have at our town meetings, I don't think that that's out of the realm of possibility. And I was just wondering if that, that's been approached to you at all for a field or anything like that?
No, I believe that's going to be in discussions for Tuesday night's meeting on town meeting and all of that. Uh, there's already been a question about, uh, going to the Xfinity Center. That cannot happen because a town meeting cannot happen outside of the, the locality. Again, this speaks volumes to how far behind we are, um, with, uh, uh, and not us meeting Norton, just the whole idea that, uh, open town meeting is, is difficult to do. But when you have something that's on the border of your town, why couldn't be able to use it? Uh, again, it is what it is.
All right, and I think the last thing that I had from last night was, um, on Friday, there's a big MIAA meeting. And I was just a little confused about what would that meeting be about? Obviously, sports are canceled for the spring season. Um, are they talking about next year or do, do you have any insight on that?
The only insight that I've had, I didn't know about a Friday meeting. The only insight I know that's been happening has been their whole restructuring that's taking place. Um, um, you know, in terms of, um, going to statewide, um, competition in terms of the playoffs and all of that stuff. Um, and there's a huge, huge, huge discussions that didn't take place, uh, the way I think it should have by the athletic directors and the principals, and that has to do with costs. Um, you know, we, we just increased the cost of transportation for all athletes throughout the state by going to this process, this new process. Um, so, uh, maybe that's part of their discussions. Um, I also found out that our hockey program right now, based on Sharon High School's enrollment, because it's a dual enrollment program, like our hockey program is now considered a division one program. Great, uh, who comes up with these things? You have a program that's literally just been starting out and now we're D1. Hey, let's go, baby, let's go, bring it on. It's based on enrollment and the higher school enrollment is Sharon, of course. And, and that's not a negative to our colleagues in Sharon. We love having their students, athletes as part of our hockey program. We want more of them. But to then say, let's take a six, seven-year program and move it to D1 is laughable at best. And we all know how I feel about MI double A and decisions.
Joe and Kathleen, I did just talk to Aaron yesterday and that's exactly what that meeting was, was about. It was more the restructuring. Um, and, and Aaron and I did talk about the, the hockey aspect of it and going back and explaining, we're a very young program next year. There's no way. I mean, this doesn't even take effect next year, it's the following year.
Right, it's 21.
Yeah, so it's a work in progress. But Kathleen, that's what they were talking about in that meeting.
Okay. All I can say is it didn't work very well for UMass when they moved to D1. I don't think they won one game that season.
Well, the, the only nice thing is I, I just had Karina change our school choice thing and says, D1 hockey program. I was thinking we could pick up some athletes. Oh, the sense of humor. Sorry.
All right, does anybody have anything else on, uh, COVID-19?
Kathleen, I will just mention, um, uh, It Takes a Community. Um, just thanking people in the community who have donated to It Takes Community. Um, we've had a tremendous amount of support come in for it. Um, we've been able to help 24 families, um, which is huge. Uh, cause typically that's what we help in one year. We just had our fundraiser on March 6th and we've already helped 24 families. Um, we have been able to help some, some seniors, um, not our high school seniors, but other seniors in town who have needed some help as well. Um, so it's been really nice. So just, I want to go on record, um, for thanking people for donating. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you, yes, excellent work on that. Okay, so moving on, um, vote to recommend to waive the class of 2020 community service requirements.
Well, Vinnie Cersei's on here with us, so I'm gonna turn it over to Vinnie. I know that many of you already know about this, but we should formally, um, take a vote and see if you support the recommendation coming from Vinnie in high school.
Hi, everybody. Um, yes, I mean, obviously the issue remains right now in the students who have not completed their community service hours. Um, and having them do that now as seniors, I'm not sure how we would be able to do that safely. Um, you know, given the situation. Um, so at this point, uh, I know, uh, Dan had asked about how many students, it's about 70 students who do not have their community service at the moment. But that typically what happens is we get a lot of kids who bring their service hours in because we still do it, so paper copies. So, um, that number probably based on sort of the historical effect, who doesn't actually have the hours? It's probably closer to about 30 students who don't have all 50 hours in. So, um, we just haven't been getting the paper copies that they typically bring into the guidance office, you know, the months of February, March and April, so.
Vinnie, can I ask, is that also inclusive of, um, community service that's required for national honor societies?
Some of the national honor society, like national honor societies, um, they have their own hours. Um, and I know that number of the, uh, societies were just waiving those, those hours, to be honest. Um, you know, each one does on its own.
Students that are actually doing kind of multiple, so it's not just 50, you know, they've been doing.
Right, right, oh, yes, yeah.
You know, a few hundreds. So I think that it's just important for people to recognize that, um, our students are, you know, good students and they're doing community service. But we're talking about, um, you know, it's not like students have left, you know, 50 hours to the last month.
No, on average, um, even with students I know that have the hours done, just haven't turned them in here still, I think the average of the students who have left are somewhere between 15 and 20. So it's not like they owe 50, everybody owes 50 hours.
Right.
Um, you know, and again, I think if we were in school and had gotten all of the, the paperwork in from the students, um, for this year alone, that number would even be lower.
And let's face it, they're probably not going to make it without the community yard sale at Wheaton College. Cause I think I've, I've signed off at least 150 hours for that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of big events that go on in the spring that students do use, um, as their final hours. Um, so, you know, and some students did take some hours and use them to, it's, you know, the honor societies, assuming that they would have this time to, to get the graduation requirement done. So, um, you know, again, I think that's, it's really how do we ask them to go out now and get community service? It's just, it's not safe.
So Kathleen, that requires a motion, second, and a roll call vote.
Okay, so do we have a motion to, um, rescind the, uh, class of 2020 community service requirement?
Motion to rescind the class of 2020 community service requirement, Dennis Savas.
Second?
Second, Caroline Gallagher.
All those in favor, Kathleen Stern, I, Sherri Cohen?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Sheedy?
Dan, you're muted.
Dan Sheedy, no.
Uh, Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
Caroline Gallagher? Yes. Um, so that's it then, right? For passes?
Yeah, for, uh, for one.
Now we'll move on to vote to cancel final exams as recommended.
Yeah, this is, this is actually pertains more to changing of the quarters. Uh, you folks really don't determine final exams per se. But because it has an impact on how we're doing the entire year in terms of moving to trimesters and now we're doing the grades and changing the numbers, you do have a right to vote on those items because you established that, um, for the district. Um, so I do need a vote, um, that you're supporting the canceling of final exams.
Are any teachers giving final exams or it's not part of the curriculum?
No, it's, it's, what, if you remember when we changed the quarters to trimesters, part of that was also a recommendation to eliminate final exams, which means mid-year exams are now worth, are still worth 10%. But first, first, uh, quarter became first trimester at, uh, 33% if you will, or 30%. And second trimester's 30%. And then the combination of the third and fourth quarter became the last 30% because there's no final exams.
Okay, so we need, any discussion? So we need a vote to cancel final exams. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved, Sherri Cohen.
Second?
Second, Caroline Gallagher.
Um, all those in favor, I, Kathleen Stern, uh, Dan Sheedy?
Dan Sheedy, aye.
Sherri Cohen?
Yes.
Caroline Gallagher?
Yes.
Dinesh Savas?
Well, I told my daughter a $20 bill would help to go a long way on this. I'll still vote yes, even though I didn't get it.
So Caroline and Cooper, I hope that you are feeling a little more settled with your senior year ending without having to do final exams. with your senior year ending without having to do final exams.
That is a little bit of a relief, that I won't have to be taking a final exam here at home. Yeah.
I'm going to call it the daily law in the future, because Caroline and I, I think, discussed it for two and a half years.
It's so funny, because when we finally get around to it, I, probably Cooper and myself, neither of us would have had shaky exams. Too little, too late.
Oh, you're good, just so good.
All right, moving on, discussion on director position, process, and vote.
Okay, so what's unusual about this situation, and Jean's on with us, and we congratulate her in moving to the executive director position at Biko, and I'll continue to see Jean at least monthly since we're part of that, and she's going to be very successful there, is we now have to replace that position. And so we're going to restructure a little bit and move into a more of a director of student services position. School nurses are going to move to have a little bit more, say, coming out of my office. And this position also includes 504s and special ed, and a more traditional, if you will, student services position. School committees vote on the hiring of the superintendent, and then all other positions, business manager, assistant superintendent, director of special education, or PPS, or in this case, DSS, those other three positions, plus the school doctor and the school nurses, believe it or not, are all appointed by you on my recommendation for hire. So I make the recommendation, you either approve it or disapprove it. So the reason why this requires your involvement at this point is, A, we're making a recommendation to change it. I did add in there other qualifications that's determined by my office, but of course, that's with recognizing that I always come to you folks for any of those changes. And subject to us posting it and seeing who internally and externally is interested in it. So the first part of this is to just basically inform you and to then ask you to approve the job description, and then add it to that, you don't have to approve it. But we have the, we have the search committees that have been outlined. All of this will be done virtually, which is going to be very different. But what I've done is I've taken, Jen O'Neill, our assistant superintendent, will oversee this, along with Matt, a special ed teacher, a general ed teacher, a principal, a team chair, and a parent. And I can also add a school committee there on that view, if you would like. I didn't, but I'm happy to do so. And then the second round, the assistant superintendent, a different principal, a different general ed teacher, a paraprofessional, and a specialist. And then the final round, myself, the assistant superintendent, and the chair of the school committee. We've done it this way before. When we hired Link, and then when we hired Matt, Dinesh was the school committee rep at that time in terms of being part of that final three, who kind of gave me some information about who they thought would be the better fit, and then I made my recommendation. So it does require a vote.
So Joe, with the same, if we do have a school committee member in the first round, would that also, would they also be in the third round, or would you still?
No. I think it's always best to share, because it allows for a different person. As you know, some of you have been on other committees for principalships and other central office staff in the past. It just gives a nice flavor to have, if, when you have multiple rounds like this, two different school committee members would be cool, just because it just brings two different perspectives. So we can add, I don't need a vote for it, I can just add a school committee member to the first round. If that's all right with everybody. And then you can decide in the next couple of days who wants to do it, unless somebody's really wanting to do it right now.
Well, the last round is the chair, assuming we don't have election, that would be me, right?
Correct. Currently, it's you, unless you want to defer. You can always, you can always designate us as the school committee chair if you so choose, and there's somebody else who wants to do it.
So I will do that part, if somebody else wants to go in the first round, if we want somebody there. What's our discussion on that?
I do not want to be there.
Oh, shocking.
If you needed me to, Kathleen, I would offer. If you wanted to start with it and see it all the way through, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, I think that's what he just said, that we would want two different ones for two different opinions. We don't have to have anybody, he doesn't have anybody in there right now.
I don't have to have anybody in that first round. That's fine with me.
Do we want to skip the first round?
Sounds like you do.
Yeah, I kind of defer to the professionals to come up with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a few in the last couple years, I'm good. I think most of them are still here, though, so that's a plus.
That's a, that's a plus. So it's a vote on the job description as written.
May I say the job description is ready?
A second?
Second.
Go on, second. Okay, all those in favor, Kathleen Stern?
Who was the second? We just need to, Sherri Cohen?
Sherri. So all those in favor, aye. Kathleen Stern. Dan Sheedy?
Dan Sheedy, aye.
Sherri Cohen?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher?
Aye.
And Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
All right, so moving on, the eighth grade field trip.
Yeah, so we're going to expand this a little bit, if you would, since it's kind of, you know, last minute from my perspective, because I couldn't post it. At this time, we are canceling all field trips for the school year, based on the school closure. I do not need a vote from you, and we'll begin that process of taking a look at the process for refunding and all of that that needs to take place. This is a bigger issue, as you all know. Monies that have come in through this and are not part of, if you will, our operating budget, you know, go into line items like revolving accounts and all that, will have to, will be secondary. You'll be voting on that probably at the May meeting. But this is an easy way for us to stop that process, to get it underway, because it's going to take multiple weeks for the town to be able to do it, because as you know, they also don't have people in the offices every single day, per se. And so we need to be flexible, and we'll put something together as a package so that the parents know when to expect something being refunded to them. And on the bigger issues, you guys will be involved with making those decisions, because it requires, for example, Little Lances preschool, transportation, and the athletic fees, all of that stuff will require your formal vote on how much do you give back, what formula do you want to use, and all of that. I'll bring that up to you as well. That's not on that issue, Madam Chair. And I apologize to the eighth graders, including that my daughter is one of those eighth graders.
So Joe, just for clarity, I know we're talking about refunds. This is regarding just field trips only right now, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, what we're trying to do is figure out the best way to provide you folks a laundry list of items, how much was paid, when do we expect payment, when do we collect it? And now that we're gone out of school since March 16th, let's say, for the rest of the year, what's the formula that the school committee wants to use? Is it a full refund? Is it a percentage of the refund? Is it based on the days left? And, or are we allowing people to leave the funds and they can be, they can stay in the revolving account and be left for next year? Next year, that family gets a less to charge because they already paid for this year. And then the implications of all of that is, the more of that we do and we decide to pay bus companies, that has an impact on our budget as well. So it's a, it's a big circle that we have to try to put in place for you folks. And we're working on it already, we're just trying to figure out the best way to put that together. And then you folks have to decide that.
I think personally, reimbursing people is going to be huge. I think people are struggling with jobs and everything else. I think that, you know, having a credit, you know, people may not be taking the bus next year, you know, like Dinesh said.
Yep.
I think that giving people back their money is going to be huge, especially for a lot of families who are really, really struggling right now.
We agree. We just have to define giving back their money. What does that mean? How much is it? So that's the key thing. But again, we totally agree, it's just a matter of collecting all of that, all the different things and its impact, and then providing you with this, that actually impact, and then beginning the process.
Is there any other discussion on other items? I do have two things, but anybody else?
I have a couple. Carolyn and Dinesh, I'll be reaching out to you about a conference call because of negotiations. So I don't know if tomorrow, late afternoon, early evening is a good time for the two of you. I know it's Friday, so we can defer it to Monday at some point.
What's, what do you define as a late afternoon? Is something working tomorrow? As I pretty much do every day, I guess. The market closes at four, from four to probably five, I'm in the car. So after that, I'm home.
So office floor, are you interested?
I could technically talk at work, so.
Say that again?
I could technically take, I mean, I could take a call at work, too. So if you wanted to say, you know, early afternoon, like 2:00 or something like that, that might work as well, so.
Okay, all right, let me see, Carolyn?
2:00 won't work for me. I have meetings all day until probably, I think, the earliest I could probably talk is 3:00.
I don't know if that's, we could also do it in the car, Dinesh, when you're, you know, I can send the information to you prior, and then we can have the discussion in the car as you're driving home at 4:00, if that's what you want.
Uh, yeah, we can, I don't love talking about stuff that's important in the car.
5:30, how about 5:30 tomorrow?
Yeah.
You can do Monday.
Let's take this offline, actually, because it only involves two.
Okay, all right, we'll do. I'll send some text messages and stuff for us to look at. Next meeting is Tuesday, the 28th, at 5:00, discuss with the town manager, the, I believe, town council's going to be there, current moderator, people running for moderator, yourselves, FinCon Board of Selectmen, myself, Matt and Wade, to just kind of take a look at town meeting, what's it mean? We have the biggest impact in terms of employees and all of that stuff. So they're trying to figure out best ways to hold elections and et cetera.
Joe, just a comment on that. I know you and I spoke today, and you will be posting for a Sabbath meeting.
Terry's posting it tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great. And secondly, if we can request for Mike that that be a kind of a Zoom meeting or any other kind of way like that, instead of a call-in, that will not?
It's already been posted by Mike, and I believe I shared it with Terry, so I'll defer to her to give me that information tomorrow, because I don't have it in front of me. But I think it's a Zoom meeting already, but I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that it is.
Okay. Your next regular scheduled meeting would be the 7th of May, and we'll keep, we'll keep that unless I need to do something again next Thursday, but right now, I think we'll be off until the 7th of May. And of course, I'll continue to send you emails that are, that are public record emails of any information that I get. I just wanted to take the time tonight, if I could, to celebrate Wayne Hudson, who we lost a couple of weeks ago. Wayne was a 20-plus-year veteran of the custodial staff, spending years side by side over with Wade, who's now our director of facilities, then to the middle school, and then to the high school. And on a personal note, thank you to the work of many who allowed for us to put our thoughts together. I'd be hesitant to not say that my wife reminded me that when we were going through some hardships of our family, that Wayne was one of those people who constantly, every day, would go out of his way to make sure that Michelle felt positive and supported. And then when our Maggie came, was one of the first people to rejoice in us being. So, long story short, it's very personal for me, because he was always very kind. And my wife reminded me of that story, because at the time, I didn't know who Wayne was, because I wasn't in the district, and I didn't know district employees. But his loss, significant, because he was a kind man to all of us, and I miss him. I miss his just smile, and hi, Dr. B, how are you? And just being a regular guy. And I know a lot of staff members throughout the district have taken his loss very seriously, including the members of the custodial crew. So my condolences to his family and to his friends and colleagues.
Absolutely. I know when I was part of the parent board and in and out of the high school all the time, he was always the first one to say, what do you need? What do we move in? What box do we need? So, and he always had a great rapport with the kids, somebody that just really loved being in a school atmosphere, and he will definitely be lost.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Joe, I had one item that we discussed.
Oh, yeah.
So one of the things that we're running into is that we're finding that some of the ways that we've been doing things in the past, in terms of paper forms and having staff signatures and dropping things off, are just not working for our current situation. One specific example, it's our course reimbursement process. Every year, we have staff members that have graduate courses or workshops pre-approved through my office, and it is a contractual item that they are able to get these courses reimbursed at the end of the year. So typically, it's a paper form. What we're asking for you to approve is for us to move this process to strictly an online format. And actually, we actually believe this is probably a best option for us moving forward, regardless of what our situation is next year. So I just wanted to run that by all of you. We, I do have, you know, Pam put together a really comprehensive process with the help of Terry and Donna Kilburn, so we're confident that this is a better option for us in general, moving forward.
Does this require a vote?
We would, we would request a vote, because we want to make sure that if there are any issues above my level, that it's clear that it's been supported by the elected board, which you folks oversee.
So do we have a vote to move course reimbursement to an online format? Move Sherri Cohen? I think Dan would be the second.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, Kathleen Stern, aye. Dinesh?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, and just one more thing, not that we generally have anything, but last night, they talked about the resolutions for the school committee meeting, which happens in November. They're hoping for it still to happen, but the resolutions would be due on January, I'm sorry, June 1st. So if we want to put anything together, it would have to be submitted as of June 1st. They are keeping that date. And the last thing, and I'm sure Karen knew about it, and I wish that I had been shared it, but if you press your space button and you unmute yourself very easily, I've been hitting my screen every second, so this is much better. All right, is there any other discussion or topics for tonight?
Can I just ask, Jen, I see that we have a list of participants. I'm not sure if anybody had any comments or questions, sort of from the audience, or?
At this point, there's only one comment from Peter Wiggins, was earlier in the evening regarding COVID and the good work that Norton has done in supporting our residents as goal answers. But if anyone else has something that they would like to add, please feel free to do that in the chat box.
And also, I'm not sure if Caroline and Cooper have any sort of student updates. I'm sure you hear kind of how students are feeling, but you're both seniors. In regards to your senior class, have there been conversations about how potentially sort of Norton Public Schools can support you as seniors? You know, have there been thoughts about what may help make this a little less overwhelming or sad? Or have, you know, the seniors talked about what we could do to kind of rally behind you?
I do know that we had just had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Dolman, the class of 2020 officers, and with his help, with everyone just like brainstorming together, he's putting together a survey to put out to the students, so that we can talk about how best to try and like preserve, or if not preserve, change the way we've celebrated, how far we've gotten with new traditions. I know that someone tried to put together a parade through town, which we were trying to execute better as class officers, to try and push that off, and then it did end up getting pushed off by some higher-ups, which we're happy about. If we want to do that, we want to do it right. So just a couple of those things. But yeah, we're going to get more information from all of the students soon about how best to proceed, and any ideas that people may have.
Caroline, I think that's great to know, because I think there's been a lot, just so, you know, you may or may not know, or I'm speaking you in sort of general in regards to students, may or may not know that when the was made about, about schools closing for the remainder of the year, many people on social media, on sort of the Norton pages, were very concerned about students who are in transition years, including certainly for Norton, third grade moving up to fourth, fifth grade going to the middle school, eighth grade going to the high school, and of course, our seniors and all of sort- And of course, our seniors and all of sort, kind of the celebrations that happen in those transition years, and there was a lot of comments from people just really wanting to support mainly our senior students, but all students in general. So it's nice to know that Mr. Dolman has had conversations with students, I think it would be really important for kind of our Norton community to know that, and that surveys are going to be going out for students, so that students can really take the lead in planning what potentially will look good for students, and how to sort of make sure that they're done with some level of sort of perfection and care. So we'll make sure that if we see comments, we'll pass it along, that sort of these conversations are happening, and that students are absolutely involved. So thanks for sharing that with us.
Of course. Any other comments? All right, everybody, stay safe, and we will see each other on Tuesday.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Carolyn Gallagher. Second, Sherri Cohen.
All those in favor, I, Kathleen Stern, Dan Shidi.
Aye.
Sherri Cohen?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher?
Yes.
Dennis Sabas?
Yes.
Have a good, have a good night.
Hey, before we wrap up, Joe and Carolyn and Jen, maybe stand in line so we can rehearse real quick what time we want to talk tomorrow.
And Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys, bye.
So are we going to talk about numbers tomorrow?
You'll get numbers, yeah, I'll forward you the numbers that's being proposed.
Wait, hold on, Jen's waving at us.
She's muted.
I'm saying we still have people on the line, so.
Well, we're not talking specifics, all we're talking about is.